All just in recognition of the tragic plane crash, Flight 3407 of 10 years ago, if we just take a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. Flags over here.
We're to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are short two board members this evening. Matt Stock and James Ogley will not be with us tonight. Before we move into the agenda, do we have any announcements?
I do. On Saturday morning, Don and I attended the Erie County Association of School Boards' annual legislative breakfast. And we had a number of, a number of school districts were represented besides Clarence, Akron, Amherst, Chico August Central, Cleveland Hill, DePew, Erie One Bosi's, Grand Island, Kenton, Sweet Home in Williamsville. And this year, they decided to split it into a north and south. So there were the southern districts and the representatives from that area had their separate program at Frontier High School. But we had our representatives there, Senator Norris and Assemblyman Schiminger. I'm sorry.
Senator Resenhopper.
Senator Resenhopper, I'm sorry, and Assemblyman Norris. But the three things that the Erie County Association of School Boards is focusing on this year are foundation aid, and secondly, school safety and student health, and then some work with the property tax cap so that there are no, some districts actually have a negative tax cap, which makes it very difficult. So those are the things that we're working on. And it was, it was a good session. We had Senator Norris with us the whole time.
Thank you. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's carried. Okay, in our packet, we have approval of two meeting minutes, the normal January meeting of January 14th and the associated executive session, as well as the budget study session and executive session that followed on January 28th. If there's no questions, could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Don, do I have a second? Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's carried. Okay. Correspondence, I see we have two letters in our packet this evening. Letter from Mary Bussie and Andrew Loeb requesting our support for Erie One Bosi's board seats. I believe Rick will touch on that a little bit later relative to the number that are up and the timing of such, so I think everybody just had a chance to read those. Before we move forward to the superintendent's report, we have the first of two public comment sessions if anyone has anything that they'd like to address the board at this time. Again, we'll have one later on. Let's keep it moving in the interest of the kids here. I have no unfinished business that I'm aware of. Anyone else? Okay. Dr. Hacks?
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. It's my pleasure to introduce Jenna Arroyo, the principal at Sheridan Hill, with teachers and fourth graders who are going to, Jenna, the fourth grade play, I'm assuming?
Welcome everyone. I have a name, it's two of our fourth grade students.
To show for you, here we go. A little intro to their fourth grade play. They've been learning about the American Revolution and they'd like to put it to life. You will not see them in costume yet. You'll have to come to the show, but I will turn it over to them.
Hello, my name is Ryan Burner and I am narrator one in the fourth grade play. The idea of a play at Sheridan Hill came many years ago when two fourth grade teachers, Ms. Greenhour and Ms. Roloff, wrote three plays to go along with our social studies curriculum. The plays help students understand history better and make it come to life by acting, dancing, and singing.
My name is Taylor Young and I am narrator two in the play. This year, we will be performing Voices of the Revolution, which is about the Revolutionary War in America. The work on this year's play began back in December. Over 55 students came to audition between seven and eight in the morning. We had to sing a solo, recite part of the play, and act out a little skit we were given. We couldn't wait to check out the big cast list outside the music door on Monday morning to see what part we were given.
I am Aubrey McCormack and I am narrator three in the play. One thing that we think is special about the fourth grade play is that every student is given a part, even if they didn't audition. The songs are very important to the play and help tell the story of the Revolutionary War. We began learning the songs in music class and many students practiced singing solos.
My name is Leila Hu and I'm the narrator four in the play. Practices are held three mornings a week from 7:15 until 8:00. Many of us here tonight have been coming two or three days since early January. Tonight, we would like to highlight a few important parts of the play we have been working on. We will start with Act One, Scene One.
My name is Christina Kirakosian and I play Sammy in the play.
My name is Megan Garrett and I play Grandma in the play.
My name is Charlotte Winters and I play the mother in the play.
My name is Carter Mountain and I play Brad in the play.
My name is Dylan Wolfley and I play the father in the play.
My name is David Charles and I play Julie in the play.
Our story begins with the Barnes family walking down a street in Boston. The youngest child stops by a window and is very excited by what she sees.
Grandma, look at the soldiers, look at their clothes. Ooh, look at their guns. Aren't they funny looking?
Those were soldiers from a long time ago. They were brave young men who fought a great war.
Like G.I. Joe, Grandma?
Oh, they were nothing like G.I. Joe Samantha. They fought a great war to make our country free.
Can we go in, Grandma? Can we? Please, Grandma?
Let's see what the rest wants to do. It's Wax Museum, I bet they might like that.
The family enters the Boston Revolutionary Wax Museum. The famous people you'll see here are all made out of wax, but they look very real. The family starts off together on a trip back in history to a time when our country was just beginning.
What a great idea this was, Mom. Julie and Brad will be studying this next year in fourth grade.
Read what it says, Dad. Did you have to learn about this resolution when you were in school?
Revolution, Brad. Yes, this is a very important part of our country's history. It is about when we were first formed. Listen to this. European settlers came to this land. They were poor and worked very hard to survive in this rough country. Many were farmers and worked their land with what little they had.
What were the other people called? The ones that didn't want to be part of England? Did they hate the king?
They were called patriots, Julie. They conceived the colonies for strong. They wanted to be a country of their own. And no, most of them did not hate the king, not yet anyway. They wanted to fight against many of the English rules and the taxes England wanted. They worked too hard to send their money to England. Many people became famous for things they said and did. This made the king very angry with the colonists. When did the war start? Come on, I want to find the soldiers.
Hi, I'm Callan Weiss and I play Custodian Joe in the play. I, I sing and speak and dance in between scenes while scenery is getting moved around. This is how I introduce myself to the audience. Hi, folks, I'm Custodian Joe and I have the best job in the world. I get paid to clean and keep these displays in tip-top shape. I'm so lucky, I spend every day with such famous people. Say, you remember the dwarfs from Snow White? They liked to whistle while they worked. Not me, can't whistle, but I love to sing and move. What's that, some dirt? I better get to work. I clean and sweep around everything here. I pick up the litter, I keep it all clear. I keep it all dustin' either keep it all clean, so sweep it, just sweep it. Sweep it, just sweep it.
Hi, my name is Erin Ostrov and I play King George in the play. Here's my speech. When I heard the news of the dumping of all that tea, I was furious. I don't think it was funny to call this the biggest tea party ever. Those colonists were acting like they've never paid taxes before. How ungrateful. After we fought a war to protect them from the French and Indians. I am so mad I could just squash them. I'll fix them. I'm going to punish those colonists like I would punish a spoiled child. The Boston Harbor will be closed until that tea has been paid for. Our great army will be paying those colonists a visit. I will not stand for this. They can feed and house our troops. We'll see how they like that.
Hi, my name is Nathan Gomez. I play General George Washington in the play. Here's my speech. I am General George Washington, Commander-in-Chief of the Continental Army. I rode among these brave men every day and know how much they missed their homes and how much they wanted to be with their families. These brave men joined us when we crossed the Delaware River in the coldest winter ever to drive the enemy out of Yorktown. People heard and more men joined us. We won some battles and lost some battles. These people came from all the colonies to fight in battles at Princeton, Saratoga, New York, and Yorktown. They suffered in freezing weather down in Valley Forge where they lived through a winter in nothing but tents. I tell you, I don't know how they lived through it. There's not enough food to eat or clothes to wear. I didn't think our army would last. I am proud to say they did survive, they did fight hard, and finally, in a town called Yorktown, it ended. We finally made the British surrender. I was happy to send these boys back home.
I am General, I am Jake Overholt and I play General Gage in the fourth grade play. I am General Thomas Gage. I was sent to the city of Boston to find the rebels, John Hancock, Samuel Adams, and those very sneaky Sons of Liberty. It seemed like they knew about every move I made before I even planned it. There were so many spies in my city, they made my life crazy. I sent the great army out of Boston into the countryside around Lexington. I expected to squash the rebels, round up the troublemakers, and go to bed a happy man. But what a mistake that was. It was the beginning of the end for England.
Hi, my name is Julia Jobs and I play General Nathaniel Green. When I, General Nathaniel Green, took over the Southern Volunteers, there were only 700 men left out of 3,000. We called for volunteers from all over the South and men joined in our fight. My men and I fought and tricked Cornwallis's men wherever they went. We made their lives miserable by the tricks we pulled. We were able to push the British troops out of the Southern colonies for good.
As you can see, we have been hard at work to learn our lines and say them with expression.
Other groups have been practicing marching and dance routines and we have all been learning songs and music.
Our parents will be meeting soon to help with costumes, scenery, and donations for our play. If you would like to see the finished product, come on Thursday, March 28th at 7:00 P.M. We know you will enjoy the show.
I would just like to take a minute to say thank you to the students who have been coming two to three times a week since the beginning of January to memorize and have such enthusiasm with your lines, and I can't wait to see the entire thing. Hopefully, many of you will join us later in March. Also, to the parents, thank you so much for making sure that they get here early and that they know their lines and they are excited to perform for everyone. Sharon Greenhour was the person who started up this wonderful event along with Mrs. Roloff, and four years ago, she transferred to the middle school, and yet she still came three mornings a week to make sure that she could produce this play. And even now, after last year when she retired, she still comes in and although she's not here tonight, she's in California visiting her grandchildren, she is here to make sure that this play is still such a success at Sheridan Hill. To Mrs. Boyer, who is teaching right now the fourth grade, the music that is going to accompany this play, also, Kim Metz, who doesn't even have fourth graders on her docket this year, coming in and supporting them and helping out in any way that she can. Thank you also to Mr. Miller, a fourth grade teacher, and all of our fourth grade teachers for helping make this a success. Thank you so much, you guys.
Great job, fourth graders. We can't wait to see the play. We're going to pause momentarily so that you can gather up your moms and dads and get yourself home.
So you come early tomorrow.
Continue with the superintendent's report. Kevin Muddelmeier, our Family Support Center Director. It's a tough act to follow, Kevin.
Can you dance or sing?
I don't do either one of them.
Oh, sorry.
Although I do appreciate having empty seats instead of a lot of eyes staring at me. So I am Kevin Muddelmeier. I don't actually know if this is on or not. I'm the coordinator of the Family Support Center here, as you all know. Since September, I've been working with a lot of help from around the district and especially at Clarence Middle School to open up the Family Support Center. I believe you were all in attendance at the grand opening, and I thank you for being there when I could not. But it's come together very well, I think. Looks great in there, and today, I'll go over a little bit of what's been going on for the last five months, where we've been, and where we look to go next. So the Family Support Center, obviously, we are here to help meet the needs of the students and Clarence residents as a whole. The district has done a phenomenal job at supporting the kids, both in terms of their academics but also their mental health. For many years, and obviously, there was a need that you all felt could be filled by having a Family Support Center to target specifically that mental health component. So anything that goes beyond the school, anything that goes beyond what the schools can provide, the counselors, psychologists, administrators, and nurses have been referring to the Family Support Center. These are just a few of the issues that have come up so far. I was looking at the list before I, while I was eating before I came here, and I realized there's things missing from that that are obvious, like autism, things like that, so it's an ever-growing list, just like the brochure is an ever-changing document as we add things coming along. The important piece to me is that students don't exist in a bubble. My goal is to help the families as a whole. If students have their needs met at home, if students have their families' needs met at home, then they're obviously going to be happier and healthier when they come to school and better able to meet the day and to thrive while they're here and going forward. Basically, this is our flow chart for the referral process, and I realize it is not clear on there. The basic idea, though, is students and parents are on the top left-hand side there. They can come to the Family Support Center. I've had a couple of them contact me directly, one by phone, one by email. One saw an article in the Clarence Bee, the other one found my email address on the district website. They were able to reach out directly to me. But in general, most referrals, as has been the case all along for the last many years, if parents need something, they've gone to their school. And that's, you know, the way it should be in communities, is we can go to our schools for support, and it's been great. Whether it's teachers, counselors, administrators, psychologists, nurses, whoever, they have then been funneling the referrals. They have a digital referral that they fill out and submit to me by email, which is actually a process that's being updated as we speak. That information gets sent to me. I reach out as soon as possible. They're able to identify it as a high priority referral if it needs immediate attention. Otherwise, it's been first in, first out, and I get to them as quickly as I can. My goal is two days, 48 hours. I want to have contact with everybody that's been referred to me. That has not been the case thus far. I'm working that way, I'm working that way to have them back down again, but that is my goal. My preference is to meet with families if they're available, that they come to the Family Support Center. That one-on-one, obviously, really helps to establish that relationship. A lot of the referrals, I'd say, the vast majority of referrals so far, parents have been able to, busy work schedules, things like that, we've done a lot of it over the phone. I've had some referrals that we were never even able to connect over the phone, and it was all done by email, which worked better for the parents, and that's fine by me. The Family Support Center, as you know, located at the middle school. The services are provided throughout the district. I've been to all of the buildings, I've met with parents, and I think four of the six buildings so far, and I've done some home visits, and I'm more than willing to meet with them wherever they need to meet. I've met, actually, I met a family at the Sweet Home Family Support Center because she worked, mom worked in Niagara Falls, I was here, we met halfway in between, that worked well for her. So wherever they need to be in the district is where I'll meet them. In addition to the referrals, and I'll touch on those in a minute, I spent a lot of time trying to build partnerships and build relationships with agencies in the area. The two at the top, Gateway Longview and Williamsville Wellness, have been two of the biggest supports we've had. They've been there since day one. Emily Clark is a clinician from Gateway Longview. She is at CMS on Thursdays seeing students. And Andy Keough from Williamsville Wellness sees kids at the high school on Tuesdays. Mental health therapy is provided. They accept almost all insurances between the two of them. Gateway Longview has a psychiatrist on staff who is available to our students should they need any kind of medication management or further evaluation. They can go to the Main Street location in Williamsville on Wednesday, yes, on Wednesdays that are there, which is, again, a great reason to have Gateway involved because psychiatry is hard to come by. It's generally, primarily offered through the agencies, and rather than partnering with somebody, they'd have to travel into Buffalo to get psychiatry. Williamsville is obviously much closer, 15 minutes down the road. The rest of them, half of those about are willing to come out on a moment's notice to meet with students, whether they're in crisis or they need an evaluation or they need somebody to talk to, they're more than happy to come out free of charge to establish those relationships and get them linked up with services that they may need. Many more of those are coming out to do staff development, and they, we've been in talks to have programs at the various schools across the district at all different grade levels. Again, ever-changing list, constantly adding to it. I was writing notes on my slides earlier about others to add, and I have to highlight, though, and I mentioned them once, but the Sweet Home Family Support Center, and Ann Milak in particular, I know you all are familiar with her, she's been a phenomenal resource, constant communication by email, in person. I attend quarterly meetings. Her advisory board meets quarterly with all of her partner agencies, which is a great chance for me to network and bring them on board. It's where Andy Keough came from. He's been at the Sweet Home Family Support Center for almost 10 years. So at my first meeting, I jumped on him and brought him over, which was a great, a great So the story so far, 130, this is outdated already, this is as of last Monday, 134 referrals have come across my desk. That was 126 from the schools, again, through the counselors, psychologists, administrators primarily. Two parents contacted me directly, and six staff members have come to me seeking support. And that's been everything, a few of them were counseling, somebody was for their senior and very ill father, looking for senior support. It's been across the spectrum. A lot of people have come with the, "I don't know if you can help with this, but, and if I don't know the answer, I'm going to find it." You can see the breakdown there of the ones from the school. 58 from CHS is obviously the leader, and 44 from across the four elementary schools. Primary concerns, the list you saw on the second slide there, that's the majority of what has come across my desk. These have been the most common. Anxiety, I know is not a shock to anybody, but that has been the number one referral. Family parenting support, that ranges from everything from family conflict, communication, there were some adoption cases, things like that, anything family related, I clumped them together. Grief and loss, separation, divorce, depression, ADHD, self-injury, and suicidal ideation is way higher than we would like, and I know that they've, there's been a lot of others that haven't been referred to me because they've done 20 lethality assessments at the high school alone this year, in addition to, I'm not sure how many at the middle school, to be honest. So those are the primary, a lot of them, a lot of the kids would come across with multiple categories. It was not, I didn't choose one category per kid. Some of them had three, four that they slotted into. Those were the primary, though. The one that I wanted to touch on, from the second category there, primarily the family conflict, there have been seven referrals that have come across so far that I've made wraparound referrals for. I don't know if you're familiar with wraparound services. They're offered through the Family Voices Network in partnership with Erie County Department of Social Services, and they are probably the highest level of care available in the district, in the county, sorry. The express goal of the program is to keep kids at home. It's kids who are at risk of out-of-home placement, primarily due to aggression in the home. Kids that are getting in violent conflicts with parents, breaking things, severe mental health, substance abuse, there's a wide range, but there have been seven of those, and they came about, there was one recently, the first six were, I think, all by November. The families really did a good job of coming to the school early in the year, seeking out support with the tremendous issues they've been having at home, and we were able to get them linked with wraparound services, which, the way it works is you have one primary case manager whose goal is to create the treatment plan with the family, establish the goals, and then bring in providers like an in-home therapist, parent advocates, skill builders for the kids, and they provide services for all members of the family, again, making sure that the family as a whole is thriving so that the student in question is able to succeed and they're able to get past whatever the presenting problem is. So going forward, we had an advisory board meeting, our initial meeting, back in November with the purpose of exploring the district and the community needs, setting goals for the Family Support Center to help meet those needs. The biggest one, I mean, I knew this coming into the interview, I heard from various people, mental health, mental health, mental health, setting up the mental health clinics. I'd heard that the process had already been started with Gateway to bring them in to the school district. Going forward, once those were established, once those mental health clinics were in process, I needed to hear from the people who were on the ground in the schools. So there was 11 district personnel, reps from all the PTOs, as well as the seven, and two outside stakeholders. Emily Clark from Gateway was there, and Don Snyder from the Youth Bureau, who's obviously very tuned in to the needs of the community. We had our meeting back in November, broke up into two groups, and everybody was able to discuss what they feel the needs are. It got broken down into three areas, staff development, so staff needs, parent needs, and student needs. And the recurring themes that came up, and I've heard these things repeatedly since then from parents as well, excuse me, for staff, sorry, for students, those peer-to-peer supports, I keep hearing from parents, "I want, I want to have names of kids that are going through something similar to what my child is going through so that they can meet up together and we can have the support groups where they can talk to each other," and whether it's a banana split type program for kids of divorce, kids from adoptive homes, down to specific diagnoses, whether it's autism, ADHD, whatever the case might be, parents are seeking those. parents are seeking those. Staff development, I've been working closely with Kristen in the curriculum office to bring in providers for Staff Development Day on April 12th, and there's a full slate throughout the day. We have Erie County Council for the Prevention of Alcohol and Substance Abuse is coming out and doing a training on current drug trends and vaping, and how the schools can respond. There are two presenters who are coming out to do presentations on mindfulness. One is a teacher with Amherst Schools who teaches mindfulness in the classroom and how teachers can implement that, whether it's a two-minute or five-minute at the beginning of the day presentation, or, sorry, activity, to get students centered and calmed down. All the studies show that mindful classrooms produce calmer, more engaged students, which is obviously fantastic. And then we have somebody coming out from Best Self who runs the DBT program there, which is designed to support students with borderline personality traits, which most typically presents as self-injurious behavior or emotional volatility. And she's going to come out and talk about emotional volatility and how to help our students that are in crisis, how to teach those emotion regulation skills to our students. We also have presenters coming out, talking about how to have difficult conversations with our students, whether they disclose domestic violence at home, dating violence in their intimate relationships, suicide prevention conversations, those students presenting crisis. The ads are always just tell one. If we don't know what to do when they tell us, then we can't really support them. It's great that they told us, but we don't know how to help them. And so we have a bunch, we have three presenters coming up explicitly talking about how to have those difficult conversations, because that was something I heard a lot of when I was making my tour, making my rounds of all the schools when I first started. I heard that, I heard it from teachers, from counselors, from psychologists across the board, of, "We need more skills on how to help these kids when they are in crisis." So that's a large portion of the day. There's a couple of others, I'm sure that I'm forgetting. Mental health first aid is an all-day, six-hour training that some of the, the 30 staff will be going through. And again, that's designed to recognize the signs of mental health crisis. It's a five-step, I think, plan on how to help them, how to help somebody in crisis, whether it's a student, a faculty member, a family friend, whatever the case might be, how to help them calm down, how to help them seek help. So obviously, a crisis intervention plan as well, which is a great, in-depth program that's been offered around the county, and I think it's a national program as well. In terms of parent support groups, I'm very happy that the Nurture Heart approach is coming to Clarence, starting March 26th and running four weeks until the Easter break. It's a parenting workshop from 5:30 to 6:00. Parents and their kids come to Clarence Center. They eat, there's pizza or subs every week. Then the kids go, they will be staying in the cafeteria. They have arts and crafts, they have other activities in the cafeteria with childcare, child watch provided by the agency, which is the Parent Network, and mental health advocates are putting on the training. They watch the kids, the parents come into the library, and from 6:00 to 8:00, they learn new strategies. Joe Clem is a phenomenal presenter. He did a presentation in Cheetawaga, he did the workshop in Cheetawaga, and some of our staff went to that, and they said it was absolutely phenomenal, and I'm very excited to not only have them coming here, but to attend myself, because I've never met a parent who couldn't use more tools in their toolbox on how to help their kids and how to manage, whether it's behavior problems, improved communication, whatever the case might be. There's also been, so Clarence Youth Bureau, Don Kinney, has been talking about having a family development day, similar to our staff development day, where we bring in presenters and outside providers. They'll be tabling opportunities as well as guest speakers coming in. Ekpassa wants to come back for that, kids escaping drugs. A lot of similar providers will be coming in to teach the parents the same skills. So that's something that's in the initial stages, but I'm very excited that I was asked to help out with that as well. Online resource guide on the website was a need. Lisa Campione, who is a newly hired clerk of the family support center, has been working on the website. There's a few resources up there, there's some workshops on the website as well for parents so that they can be constantly kept up to date. It's a work in progress, it's just getting started, but I'm excited that somebody's working on it because I have not had a chance. And that's, I'm glad it's getting done. Preventive programs at all grade levels, that's a big goal for me. I don't want to, so going back to Sweet Home, I went to a meeting there early on, and I asked some other family support center liaisons and coordinators for advice, getting started, coming into a new district, never had it before. And one of the first things that I was told is, "Don't be a crisis worker." My job is not to be here to put out fires all day long. My job is to support the families and to minimize the need, and that's where the preventive programs come in. Every agency that I talk to, I listen to what they have to say, and I say, "That's great, what can we do at the elementary level?" Because when I have people from kids escaping drugs saying they do high school presentations, and the students come up to them afterwards and say, "This is great information, I wish I'd known sooner, I'm already addicted, it's too late." What can we do at a younger level? What can we do to bring in more pro-social skills, more of the skills they need to survive and battle and beat the anxiety that they're dealing with, so that they don't turn to drugs or alcohol, so they don't, so they don't need the crisis intervention and the programs later on? So that's a growing area for me. A lot of places, a lot of places aren't ready to go to elementary schools yet. They're not ready to have those tough conversations in the elementary school with the younger audiences, because it's tough. You don't, you want to, you want to give information without scaring them, and they're trying, they're not trying to figure that out. Erie County Council for the Prevention of Alcohol and Substance Abuse is the one that I met with last week, that they feel, they do have programs, they have evidence-based programs. There's a cost associated with them. It's not a major cost, and I'm hoping that we can find ways to work around that. Don, I'm already putting together a C-Staff grant again, application again. So preventive programs is an area of need that we're still working. So there's my contact information, Lisa's contact information. I wanted to give you the nuts and bolts and leave a lot of time for questions. If you have any, don't hesitate. Or if you think of something later on, obviously, send me an email, give me a call, I'm more than happy to answer. Any questions you've got?
Of course, I have a couple. I am very happy that we have our support center. I am curious how often you think your advisory board's going to meet? That's my first question. My second question is on this Natural Heart program. How are we going to get the word out to the parents and the community that were joining us?
So for the advisory board, right now, I have, I'm in the sort of pre-planning stages of having one later in the year. I'm thinking probably May, which would be a lot of updates on where we are, following the first meeting and following those first goals that we laid out, and then what the plan is to meet those goals going forward. The goal is, and I don't have a number for you, but probably quarterly would be my prediction now, the goal is to have more outside providers attending those meetings. If you look at the Sweet Home meetings, which, again, I've been attending theirs as I get everything up and running and learn from, well, learn from the best in Ann, there's only a few district staff there, the rest are outside providers, and they're all talking about how they can support the students. And the more, the more programs we bring in, the more places we have to turn, should we need to turn to somebody. So that's my goal, is to keep staff, keep district personnel on the board, because obviously, you have to have people there who are on the ground and seeing things firsthand. But to bring in more providers and bring in more presenters, that'd be relevant to everybody. For the nurtured heart approach, we, Lisa actually, I think, just sent out the flyers, I'm getting, nodding heads. I know they came back from the printer. They've gone out to all the elementary schools and all the pre-K buildings to send home with all the students. They've been emailed to, oh, sorry, they will be emailed to the PTL reps, so that they can put it in their newsletters and send it up to their contact list closer to the date. We didn't want everything to go out now, both in the newsletter and home with the students so far in advance, so we'll get some reminders out later on. And then I was going to tap into IT to figure out how we can use PowerSchool or Schoology to get information out to the parents, again, to get those reminders out there.
What about the new contact system? Is there a way to use that, or is that for emergencies only?
Nope, there's a way to use it. The principals are being trained as we speak, and we're going to also train Kevin.
Right.
Any other questions for Kevin?
I'm sorry. I see you're at 1:34 as of last week. What was your, what did you think you'd get in terms of year-to-date, for the whole year? Annualized, at what do you know?
I didn't, I didn't have a guess. I didn't know what to expect. I, yeah, I didn't have any number in mind. I was surprised early on when the influx came in, but I think that people have been managing everything the best they can for so long that having somebody new and having a new outlet for those hard-to-reach families or those families with a lot of need. So I knew there was going to be an influx initially, and it slowed down now, and then as the word gets out, it'll pick back up again.
If you had more staff, do you believe you could cut down the 48-hour turnaround time?
Yes.
I mean, I know that there's only so many people, and so it's something to look at, because 48 hours is a long time in a crisis while you're managing a bunch of other crises.
So if there is a crisis, then it's flagged as a high importance, and I respond that day, I reach out to the family. I had a call today for a referral that was sent to me on Friday from the high school, Thursday or Friday, and they were on my list of people to call today, but when Trey Gardner called and said, "I just got off the phone with this parent, they, something happened over the weekend, they need a call now," I hung up with him and I called the family right away. If there is, if there's an acute crisis, I call immediately. Otherwise, like I said, you have first in, first out.
Basically, it was my question, because I've talked to people, and we haven't had it before, and a lot of people don't know what a family support center is, but obviously, with about 140 referrals, there was quite a demand, so thank you.
I can tell you that when we were in the planning stages, we thought that if we could help 40 families by the end of this school year, that would be considered an enormous success. So I'm startled by the large number. Any other questions for Kevin? Kevin's doing a great job. This is, you know, I think these are significant accomplishments, from brainstorming this with the safety committee last year to this point in time, having everything up and running, so thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. X. Thank you, Kevin. Would that move into financials?
Sure, we just have a couple of things I wanted to touch base on. We did get $500 for the high school, for the healthy challenge. We did put two water filling stations in the last two times that we won, so we're going to work with the high school and see what is something good for that with the wellness committee. EYBOSIS, as Mr. Fuchs mentioned, we did receive two letters requesting support. There are three seats up this year, and certainly, anybody sitting board member can be nominated, whether it's our board or any of the ones that requested it. The time limit does say March 15th, so there is another board meeting between now and then, if you wanted to nominate somebody either now or at the next board meeting. The last thing I've had was the increase for our school resource officers. Our two school resource officers, as you know, retired state troopers, received the waiver for the pension so they could earn over the $30,000. Iroquois, the model that we used, the person is making in the mid to upper 50s, we did budget in anticipation of this $50,000 for each of them, and that's what to recommend that we move their wages to.
Does anybody have any questions on the financial items? Just to be clear, so, again, we haven't had anybody on this board interested in EYBOSIS, but we have until the next meeting to potentially-
Yes.
Somebody here to nominate or express interest to have us nominate.
Right.
Okay. No questions? Can I get a motion to approve items F. 1, 2, and 3?
I'm going.
Second. All those in favor? All right. Carrie, thank you. Dr. Patac, instructional?
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. You have a number of items here, requests for leave of absence, appointments, hopefully this is the final installment of the screen sports schedule, we have one new coach at the modified level, and that's what you're appointing this evening, math and ELA tutor specifically for ELL students, academic intervention services at Harris Hill, community education program for the late winter and early spring, presentation compensation additions and addition, and two deletions to the substitute teacher list, and then also, we're asking you to ratify the agreement between the Clarence Central School District and the Clarence Administrators Association. The agreement calls for a three-year agreement beginning July 1st, 2019, running through June 30th, 2022. The salary increases in each of the three years will be at 3%. The concessions accepted by the bargaining group included an increase in some prescription drug copayments, an increase in contribution toward the health insurance premium equivalent, which will bring them to 12% by the end of the contract, and some additional changes in some of the copays for the medical insurance.
Does anyone have any questions on the instructional items? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve P. 1 to P. 6?
No.
Do I have a second?
I'm going.
All those in favor? All right. Carrie.
Instructional? Instructional, we have a request to amend a previous board action, one termination, a resignation, change in status, a request for leave of absence, a request for an extension of a leave of absence, two appointments, and then additions to the substitute list.
Any questions on P. 7 to P. 14? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? All right. Carrie. Special needs and student activities.
20 committee on special education meetings, 13 preschool meetings. These are mostly changes to the IEPs that they plan. The big push starts next month, I mean?
It's already started. If no questions, can I get a motion to approve S. 1 and S. 2?
I'm going.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Carrie. All right, board development?
We have a bunch of stuff under board development. First, there is an addendum for a field trip for the Science Olympiad that we didn't know about prior to posting this stuff on Thursday. So we have the Science Olympiad overnight trip, which is really a competition. We have the traditional Clarence Middle School trip to Washington, D.C., and the traditional Clarence Middle School trip to Quebec. Those are the field trips. You want me to go through everything, Mr. President?
You want to do the, let's do the field trips separate and then come back to the other item. Is there any questions on B. 2 to B. 4? And then, I'm sorry, B. 2 to B. 3, and then the supplement we have on our table? If no questions, could we get a motion to approve the field trips for Clarence Middle School to Washington, Clarence Middle School to Quebec, both November of 2019, and then the overnight trip for the Science Olympiad?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Certainly.
All those in favor? All right, Carrie.
We have chunked the policy manual, and the first three chunks are the 71, 72, and 73 hundreds. There are many things here. There are many changes also because of the legal stuff that Rick has researched. It would be my recommendation that you table this for another month, just so that you have enough time to look it through. There are at least two more chunks this large, Mr. Manquoso?
Correct. And I could give you those the next time also.
Yeah. I know we talked at the last meeting about chunking it up, so we had smaller pieces to digest. There is a lot here. I don't know if anybody had any particular comments on the three sections in our packet this evening? Again, Mr. Manquoso, I think, as Dr. X stated, a lot of this stuff is updated just to reflect current legislation on that. You know, there's some additions that are, like the RTI section is brand new. Is that a requirement from the state level?
So then is the action to hold it up till next month?
So I was going to ask, so we can either vote- So I was going to ask, so we can either vote to accept the changes as is, we've got no feedback, or we could vote to amend the agenda and table it. Anybody have any preferences?
If people need more time to review it.
Is everybody ready? Don, are you okay?
I'm okay.
Okay. I think all of us here are good, so I guess-
Makes us happy.
Yep.
Let's get it taken care of. So could I get a motion to approve the policy manual sections 7,000, 7100, 7200 and 7300 in our packet this evening?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor? All right, Carrie.
Last item under board development is the 2019, 2020 school calendar. We do match most of our dates with the BOSEs calendars, the ones that don't match are staff development slash superintendent conference days, but they never match, so we think this is just about the best calendar we could create for parents and kids. And the staff likes it too.
Do we have enough snow days?
We have four built in there. There's never enough, Mr. Fuchs.
Weather looks tough tomorrow. Any questions on the calendar? Can we get a motion to approve?
So graduation's June 27.
Yes, graduation would be very late now. We moved graduation back a week this year and they're actually graduating before the end of the school year because we couldn't get client hands on a Saturday. We are pretty sure that we have secured client hands on the 27th. Did we do that right?
Yes, we did.
So as long as we have the primo time, having it on the Saturday after the last day of school is the best preference.
Can I get a motion to approve the calendar for the 1920 school year?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, Carrie. Brings us to our second public comment session, if anyone has anything they'd like to add. All right, so in our packet, we have a schedule of upcoming meetings. February 25th, Clarence High School is our second budget study session for the year at 7:00 PM. March 11th is our next regularly scheduled board meeting and that will be also back at the high school in the lecture hall at 7 o'clock. No other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of a particular person.
Come on.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? All right, thank you, everyone.